Good morning Birmingham. Today is March 8, 2022. It's after 9:30 a.m. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Our invocation will be read today by Councilor J.T. Moore and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilor Darrell O'Quinn. Would you please stand? Thank you.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we come before you today just thanking you for this wonderful day that we have. Another opportunity to live life on purpose and to be a blessing to those who are around us. We thank you, Father God, for giving us the wisdom that we need to lead lives that bring glory to your name, God. We thank you for each and every blessing that you have given us, God, and we thank you that we use this day to continue the work that you have called us to do. I thank you for health throughout the bodies of each and every citizen in this city. I thank you, Father God, that you have given us a spirit of love, power, and a sound mind. And I pray for those who... Yes, Father God, I just pray for those who are out on the streets right now, Father God, seeking for help, seeking for purpose, seeking for somebody to reach a handout. I thank you that you have blessed them, God, that you have moved on the hearts of people in communities to find their place, to give and to be a blessing in situations that they have the means to. And so, God, on today, I just thank you for a productive meeting. I thank you that we are able to continue to make decisions that bring about the best quality of life for those who they will touch and affect, and we just bless your holy name. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll? Good morning.
Counselor Abbott. Counselor Clerk. Counselor Moore. Counselor O'Quinn. Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams. Morning, Counselor Woods. Counsel President Pro Tem Smithman.
Good morning.
Morning. Counsel President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you. Counselors, can I have a motion and second for approval of the minutes from the meetings of October 5th, October 12th, October 19th, October 26, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
I got the second. Ms. Tate, was that Counselor Smithman for the...
That was Ms. Abbott and Ms. Tate. That's okay.
We all sound alike.
No, you know. The voting should be over. All right. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for November 2nd, 2021 through March 1st, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, good morning to you. Good morning to your colleagues. Good morning to those who are in the council chambers, and good morning to the public. A few notes, Madam President and Counsel. As you know, the city has a lot of upcoming sporting events that I think I want to share out loud with the public and you all. On this SWAC, 2022 Cricket Wireless SWAC, men's and women's basketball tournament kicks off this Wednesday, tomorrow, at our, at Barto Arena. As well as the NCAA D1 Track, 2022 NCAA One Men's and Women's Indoor Track and Field Championships will be held March 11th as well as March 12th at the Crossplex. Then our very own Legion, Legion FC Professional Soccer Team kicks off their season this Sunday. Hope to see you all there at 4:00 p.m. at Protective Stadium. They face Tampa Bay Rowdies. And apparently, there's a challenge of packing out the stadium of at least 15,000 fans, so please share with those citizens and residents and children and families in your districts. As well as this past weekend, the 6A Huffman Vikings and the 5A Ramsey Rams competed in the Alabama High School Athletic Association State Basketball Finals. And although both came close to winning it all, but failed to their opponents, but I do want to shout them out for what I saw in person up close. A very strong spirit and fighters, and so, go Vikings as well as go Rams. I know I saw several of you all there, and I think they will be in very good shape for the next year's season. If you all didn't know, you know, the basement for a while has not had opportunity to provide any food service, but glad to share with you all the Perfect Note Express, which is a cafe. And they like to share, this is a cafe with soul. It's now open to the public in the basement, so it's not just to our city employees, it's also open to the public. The owners are Tremaine and Karen Thompson, and it's serviced for breakfast and lunch from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. On occasion, they will feature live music. You can check out their menu at perfectnoteexpress.com. Again, that's perfectnoteexpress.com. Madam President, in the interest of time, I got a few more notes, and we're going to yield the floor and give it back to you.
Would you like to go ahead? I'll let you go ahead.
I think I should. Had a tough weekend. Last 72 hours, we've had three homicides. Saturday, we had an innocent 13-year-old. First name is Jalen. He will be 14 May 27, a few months from now. And as I spoke with his mother in person yesterday, while she was, through her tears, sharing with me about who her son is. Quiet child, gamer, kept to himself. As I talked with this principal yesterday in person, as I spoke to a few of his classmates, quiet again. A good child. I think it's tough for, I know it's tough for the family, right? It's tough for that mother, it's tough for that father. It's tough for his older sister, and it's tough for his extended family and his neighbors who, here's a 13-year-old that will not get a chance to see his 14th birthday, will not get a chance to attend his eighth-grade dance, get a chance to, you know, relax this summer and be excited about going to high school. And often, we want to point the finger at so many people. What are the police are going to do, and what's the mayor going to do, and what's the city council going to do? Who's responsible for this? I just want to, you know, to the public state and to you, shooter or shooters are responsible for this. And it's our, it's our goal to give our detectives every resource available to them, bring some form of justice to this victim as well as this victim's family, 13-year-old Jalen. Truth is, the police were not there. Our ability to solve homicides, especially when innocent children are involved, predicated on one thing, witnesses' ability to come forward, or those with information to come forward. And so, my plea to the public this morning is, is anybody with information, three or four days later, our detectives still need help, and anyone that has information that can lead to an arrest of the person or persons who, at the time, to drive by this house, shoot at this house, bullied and hurt a 13-year-old, and this child died. It's not fair, it's not right, it's wrong, and a lot of emotion that I have that doesn't compare, in comparison, or it's not in comparison to what his family's feeling right now. Had another homicide this past Sunday that is still in open active investigation, and it's come to my attention that this is your colleague, Tonya Tate, Chairwoman of Public Safety, family member, nephew, and it's happening in her district. Last week, I spoke, it was either last week or the week before, Madam President and Counsel, I spoke to this whole notion of, can't police our way out of this. Thing I also want to mention, though, we can't program our way out of this either, right? I can, I can offer all the conflict resolution and put all the financial resources around conflict resolution and violence interrupters, continue to work with the school system and support additional wraparound services, and continue to fight poverty with programs like Birmingham Promise and all of that. But at some point, you know, adults have to make better decisions, especially when innocent children are involved, or an adult talking to another adult where there's a verbal altercation and one of them decides to up a gun and pull the trigger and kill another adult because their tempers are high. Most of the time, you can't police that, truthfully. But as I stated last week, which I failed to mention the point, last week, I mentioned that as, I think it's important as adults, as fathers, as mothers, parents and grandparents, as mentors, and big brothers and big sisters, tell our children that we love them. The point I failed to mention, Madam President, I think it's equally important that we show them we love them, and I think we fail to do that a lot of times. And a friend told me that it's probably as much as it is to tell them you love them and show that you love them, you have to empower them and teach them how to love themselves so when they become adults, they're not making some of these same decisions. Some of our current adults are making in our community where have led to innocent children being killed, have lead them to have a verbal altercation or disagreement with another adult. Instead of talking it out or walking away, they up a gun and shoot the other person. So for clarification, our detectives are doing every single thing they can. Our detectives are doing every single thing they can to bring these victims and these victims' families some form of justice. Continuing to plead with the public, call on the public if you have information, don't withhold it, share it with us. If it needs to be anonymous, we got, we can take care of you. If you need safety with housing because you're afraid to share information because you live within a certain proximity of the people you think that will do harm to you for coming forward, we provide you safety. We can provide you with transitional or safe, safe housing somewhere else. Just a note, two-year-old was killed a year ago, and it took over a year to find justice for that family. I'm hoping the same thing does not occur for this 13-year-old. I'm hoping it doesn't occur for those other teenagers that are 15 and 16 that have been killed in our city this year. So, that's a lot, truthfully, but it's been on my mind, it's kind of, it's been kind of hard to think about other things, it's been hard to sleep when you, as mayor and as a leader, you want to do every single thing you can to protect children. And I know, I know their parents want to do every single thing they can to protect their children, but what do you do when other adults don't feel the same way you do, or their behavior leads to this? And then they're coward enough not to come forward. There's a lot of emotion in that, but we want to thank y'all for your platform and your voice for this on the forefront of our citizens' mind. I think everybody's frustrated and tired at this point, angry, sad, but I don't want people to feel like we can't do anything about it. I believe we can. I just think adults have to be more accountable and responsible for the decisions we make. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do appreciate you sharing that, not only with the council but with the public. And I thank you today for being the leader and wanting to help to lead us through what's going on here in this city. We do have some councils that would like to speak to that. Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Wolfen, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I do think adults need to do better, honestly, and I think it's going to take the whole community because the government can't do it all. We need help. There's, I feel like people always talk about, oh, my neighborhood used to look like this, oh, my neighborhood used to be like that. Well, that was because it was literally neighbors helping neighbors. Like, if you know, you see somebody about to have a confrontation and guns haven't been pulled out, try to intervene. Like, that's what happened. Or even the kids, if you see a kid on their way to doing something bad, talk to them. Like, it's so important that we come together and have unity right now. That's all that's going to be able to happen. But I do want to talk about something else that happened this weekend, and I think three of us were there. It was very traumatic. I'm not going to even, like, downplay it. I called you right after it happened. So this weekend, at Legacy Arena, it was in between the games, there were multiple fights that broke out, and it was actually with children. And the police were doing a good job. They tried to do the best they could, but it was just so much going on. I was sitting down on the front row, and I just saw a whole bunch of kids coming down and going into the tunnel, and I just kind of was like ignoring it because I was like, well, maybe something's going on, maybe they're excited. The next thing I hear is someone says, get down, there's a shooter. So I get down under the desk. My mom does, my dad does. These five and six-year-old children beside me, I pulled them down because I said it's more important to make sure they're covered than myself, and we proceeded to be in terror. Once we got up and tried to exit, 200 people probably in front of us tried to exit. I don't know what the police told them, and they came running back down, i.e. a mini stampede toward us. My mom almost got run over. There was a man who was handicapped, and another man was over him, making sure he didn't get stepped on. That, I haven't experienced that since the late 90s. I was like four or five, and it was a respect rally at Bill Harris Arena. I'm pretty sure if you're old enough, you remember that, there was a shootout there. Needless to say, our police need more help. Our police did the best we could. And Mayor Wolfen, Counselors, hey, y'all know I've always been about community intervention police, and at this point, I don't even care what the activists have to say about me saying this. I'm asking for a raise for our police. Our police are leaving because we are not paying them enough. Like, we have to take care of our public safety workers at this point because if we can't get unity, we got to make sure we just support them. And then, if you all, public, aren't aware, the Alabama Senate just passed a permitless gun carry law. That means these criminals, which Mayor Wolfen has talked about, is making it so hard to get the guns off the street. Now it's going to make it even more difficult for us to get off the street. We need help for our police. I am requesting that, I don't know what you can do, if we can do it this budget season, but help our public safety workers. We have to at some point because I want our community to feel safe. Like, that, back in the day, Bill Harris, sorry, not Bill Harris, B.J.C.C. at the state championship, we had police officer everywhere, everywhere. But unless we can make sure we can, because what happens publicly, we have the best training in the state for our public safety workers, but because we can't pay them and we can't keep them here, they leave and go to other municipalities. And in fact, the other municipalities won't even help us when we call them. So I'm asking you, please, Mayor Wolfen, and ask, ask us how we can help too. But it's two-part. We need the community to come together, and we got to make sure our public safety workers are incentivized to make sure that they stay here. So I know that you are very passionate about this. Thank you for my time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I just wanted to say, very well spoken today. Thank you for your leadership. I know that it weighs heavy on you, and I know that you balance a lot, and I'm continually impressed, especially when we hear things like what you just spoke to today, both about programming and about supporting our law enforcement. It is impressive because there's a lot of mayors across the United States in a lot bigger cities and more high-profile roles that don't get the job done that you do. So thank you for that. It makes it easy for all nine of us to stand here next to you because you do that. One thing that the mayor alluded to but didn't actually say is the number for Crime Stoppers is 254-7777. And I think that all 10 of us understand why we have a no-snitching culture in Birmingham and the fear that our residents perceive if they do, if they're seen supporting the police by giving information. There is a truly anonymous way that the city has set up with Jefferson County to make sure that not even the call taker knows who is calling. A random number is generated, and that person is given a random number. I think there's a lot of misconception about how Crime Stoppers of Metro Alabama works, or Metro Birmingham, rather, but every step has been made where it is completely anonymous, and I just want to reemphasize that to our citizens. The no-snitching culture is one thing, but when a child is killed, that should go out the window. That, there, there is, you know, who the hell cares at that point? And so, I just want to call on the citizens because when I was talking to the District Attorney's Office a while back, something very upsetting was said to me, and it was, he said, the District Attorney at the time said, Hunter, you know, if, if what, we were talking about a specific crime that had occurred in Birmingham and it was involved a child at that time, and he said, Hunter, you know, if this happened in Vestavia or Hoover, we'd have 400 tips to go on for this child, and they had none in the city of Birmingham, and that's not acceptable. We need the community to assist our police department and our detectives, and as the mayor alluded to, our detectives will only be able to solve at a rate that the community's willing to help. And if it means being anonymous, call Crime Stoppers, 254-7777. But we're talking about children who, who have been killed, and we're talking about adults that will not help if they have information. And there's got to be a point, there's got to be a line in the sand somewhere where, who the hell cares if it's the no-snitch thing when it's a child? I think everything's out the window at that point. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate all the comments from the counselors, and of course, we appreciate you, Mayor Wolfen. The next, Mr. Clerk, would you share the consent agenda with us, please?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with item 1, 2, and 3. Page three, we have items 4, 5, and 6 on consent. Page four, items 7 and 8 are on consent. Page five, item number 9 is on consent. Page six, item 10 is on consent. Page seven, item 11 is on consent. Page eight, items 12 and 13 are on consent. Page nine, items 14 and 15 are on consent. Page 10, item 16 is on consent. Page 12, we have items 17 and 18 on consent. Page 13, item number 19 is on consent. Page 14, item 20 is on consent. Page 16, item 21 is on consent. Page 17, we have items 22 and 23 on consent. Page 19, items 24 and 25 are on consent. Page 20, we have items 26 and 27 on consent. Page 21, items 30 and 31 are on consent. Page 2, we have items 32, 33, and 34 on consent. Please note, please note some changes to item number 33. The total amount allocated should be $14,999, and we will add $10,000, $4,999 for Counselor Clark's discretionary fund, and that will change $10,000, I guess. Stay the same to Counselor Hunter Williams discretionary fund.
You don't want to add the extra penny, Counselor Clark.
Not adding anything, I'm sorry. So it will stay the same, and then the total amount again is $14,999.
Excuse me, Mr. Clerk.
It'll be another change on that item as well to add $2,500 from District One discretionary.
Okay, so that's an additional $2,500 from District One. Counselor Woods discretionary.
So make that change, and total should be $17,499 for the entire appropriation. Let me pick back up with the consent agenda on page 23. With items 35, 37, there's a request for deferral for item number 36. Page 24, we have items 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Page 25, we have items 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Page 26, we have items 44, 45, 46, and 47 on consent, and you have two addendum items, neither right now are on consent. And just while we're on it, 49, the addendum item that's not recommended by Public Safety, they didn't actually meet, so we just have to submit a recommendation by Counselor Tate.
What was that item, Mr. Clerk?
It's like 49, the addendum item.
All right, thank you. And I believe just for clarity, the question that been asked on item 36, what was the timeframe for deferral? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Thank you. Counselors, we also have two addendum items, item 49 and 50, and, Mr. Williams, do you have, ask for requests for any additions or any removals? Hunter Williams.
Yes, ma'am. More Dean Alexander. I would like to, I'd like to add 49 and 50 to consent and then take off item 13.
All right, so you're adding item 49 and 50 to consent, and you want to take off item 13?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and that's on page 8, item 13. One is a public hearing. Go ahead. With that item going beyond the amount, will we have to do it separately? You want to change your amount, Counselor? Right. Counselors, we'll just table item thirty-three and we'll bring it back up later after discussion. Thank you. Are there any other councilors that would like to add or remove any items from the consent agenda? All right. Before I read the, before we take the motion, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, and those are indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by calling the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do I have a motion and a second for consideration of the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second was Tate. Councilor Tate. Well, thank you. We will start doing that. Technology has arrived. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right. Thank you, everyone.
But Madam President-
Yes, ma'am.
Just to confirm, we still make the motion out loud.
I was gonna think- Thank you.
So you just want us to poke the button and not say anything?
Yes. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So all the items listed on the consent agenda have been approved. If you were here for one of those items, your item has been approved. You do not have to remain with us or you can just stay around and join us for the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, without objection, I'd like to ask that the rules are suspended for the presentation of speakers. We do have a presentation brought by Councilor Moore this morning. Councilor Moore? I can do it now without asking you. Thank you.
How quick with it. Um, right. Uh, I'm actually gonna go down to the podium. I'm gonna ask that all of my visitors to come up, please, and guess. Madam President, Council, Mayor, uh, this morning I have the pleasure of standing with some uh, very special uh, individuals who I will uh, introduce shortly. But uh, today, wanted to take the time to honor a man whose personality was larger than life, uh, whose commitment to his purpose was nothing short of amazing, and whose passion could only be described as a fire you can't put out. Um, I'm speaking of none other than the Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. Now, some of us were fortunate enough to know the man. Many of us uh, know the name, but the goal of today is to never forget the story. Uh, to never forget that a man who was not a politician was able to not only get city ordinances changed, but played a pivotal role in paving the way for the Civil Rights Act of nineteen-sixty-four to be passed. To never forget that not only was his church bombed three times, but when his house was bombed on Christmas Day, might I add, he found, when he found himself alive, he took it as a sign from God that he was chosen to lead the fight and went out the very next day to lead other African-Americans to ride the bus and ignore segregated seating arrangements. Uh, to never forget that with all of the violence he experienced, he never promoted violence towards anyone and preached a message of non-violence, compassion, and love. Uh, to never forget that there was a man who stood flat-footed for what he believed in, unwavering and unafraid of the opinions and threats of others. Um, and one of the best ways for us not to forget is to uh, to continue to support all of the efforts that are going forth at Bethel Baptist Church. So today, as we are ten days away from what would have been his one-hundredth birthday on March the eighteenth, uh, I want to give an opportunity to some key individuals to say a few words on behalf of Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, um, uh, today. So first, I'm gonna have uh, Brother Jay Robertson, who is a close family friend uh, of the Shuttlesworth family. Uh, then I'm gonna have uh, Ms. T. Marie King, who is a community activist uh, and filmmaker. Uh, and she's gonna share uh, some things. And then I'm gonna have Pastor Thomas Wilder, the presiding pastor of Bethel Baptist Church, to come and speak as well.
Good morning.
Morning.
To the uh, mayor of our great city, Mayor Randall Woodfin, to our council president, a good friend, uh, Councilor Alexander, a great golfer and good friend, uh, Council Pro Tim Smitherman, to all of the council members here in the city of Birmingham. I am honored that Councilor Moore would invite me to share a few words. Uh, I stand on the shoulders of, of my family. And I represent uh, the Robertson family, which I'm a son of Bethel Baptist Church. Uh, grew there, grew up there for many years in Collegeville and played basketball and a lot of great things. And I was always fortunate to hear the history of Dr. Fred Shuttlesworth, uh, under his leadership at Bethel Baptist Church when my grandfather, Mac Robertson, was the head usher, that on that Christmas Day, you're talking about nineteen-fifty-six, he locked the doors before the bomb went off in Collegeville. Uh, it is due that we honor Fred Shuttlesworth in his one-hundredth birthday. I think about names of Colonel Stone Johnson. I think about names like James Revis. I think about names like Reuben Davis, people that served as security for their church, that watched over their church for citizens in North Birmingham. That church was bombed three times. And it's fortunate today that we are still able to have leadership from Reverend Wilder at Bethel Baptist Church to continue to share the history of that iconic church uh, in Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, when I served in the same seats you all served, uh, we went to the National Park Commission, make sure that historically site was, was preserved and preserved, rather, and kept as an icon for many, many people to understand what Dr. Fred Shuttlesworth stood for. And I'm just truly honored to be here today, uh, standing again on the shoulders of my family, uh, to stand with Councilor Moore, who represents District Four now, uh, to continue to share the history of Fred Shuttlesworth and all he did for our community. That we could be here today in these councilor's chambers representing the great city of Birmingham. So thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Moore, and live on the history of Dr. Fred Shuttlesworth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilor Moore, for um, this opportunity. Um, T. Marie King, this is my co-producer.
Jay Whitson from Alabama Public Television.
And we are just honored to be able to not only use our talent, but our heart for Birmingham to tell the story through the medium of film about Reverend Shuttlesworth. You know, to be an activist and a filmmaker to tell his story is, you know, already Oscar-worthy or Emmy-worthy in my mind, just having that opportunity. But it gives us an opportunity in our partnership with B C R I to also bring young people into the Institute on the Eighteenth to be able to learn even more about our hero, who has did so much for paving the way for the movement to complete as it had, but also to go to the next level. And then being able to engage in that history with Reverend Wilder, as well as Dr. Boyer and the Carlton Reese Choir. So we thank you so much for this opportunity to be here and to celebrate what would have been his one-hundredth birthday.
Thank you.
Have a documentary about him out.
Home training dictates that I first apologize to, I started here almost an hour early, but therefore, every day. Apologies. Let me also introduce Dr. Martha Boyer, who is the executive director of Historic Bethel Baptist Church. She helps me as we try to make sure that Reverend Shuttlesworth's name is remembered and his deeds are remembered. I am privileged not only to have served as a person who came after him, but also his chauffeur at one point. Driver, I served as his pastor, I served as his stewardess. And hopefully, I served as his friend while he lived. He lived a very tremendous life. And I am privileged, we are privileged, to walk in his shadow. One of the things that we're also trying to do, though, is to keep going. My heart was broken this morning as I heard the mayor talk about the kids that were killed. And take a lot of responsibility on yourselves. Some of that responsibility has to start with us as pastors and as leaders. Can't do what we can do. You only see people once every while, in a while. We see them every day. We have the opportunity to touch them every day. And so we're doing, helping not only to celebrate Reverend Shuttlesworth, but to join the fight to preserve the life of our citizens. I'm gonna ask Dr. Boyer to come. She is much more eloquent and knowledgeable on Reverend Shuttlesworth than I am. So please, Dr. Boyer, would you come?
My name is Martha Boyer and I'm the executive director, as Reverend Wilder said, of the Historic Bethel Baptist Church Community Restoration Fund. I'm a former educator and I really and truly have had the privilege of seeing your council, thank you, and the mayor, when they were also serving on Board of Education as well. I served as a member of the Jefferson County Board of Education. And what I get to do right now is so critical. I get to educate teachers from around the world. I really and truly do. They come to Birmingham. I've had teachers from places like Russia, Turkey, Kazakhstan, Pakistan, and teachers from as far away as, for me, even as Alaska and Hawaii who come here. And this summer, we'll be running another Stony the Road We Trod, exploring Alabama's civil rights legacy, to help teachers better teach this story of overcoming in the face of extreme obstacles and then looking at my personal hero, Reverend Fred O'Shuttlesworth. We thank you so much for taking this opportunity to honor him and to support our everlasting work. It'll never ever stop because we're all here, because we stand on the shoulders of giants and leaders. Thank you so much.
Really quick, I wanted to uh, also give an opportunity to the Neighborhood Association of Collegeville, Ms. Drusilla Royal, to come and speak as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For God be the glory for the things he has done. And through Collegeville, I love to tell everybody the story of, thank Dr. Reverend Shuttlesworth for all that he did throughout the community. And I being one of those people who grew up under Dr. Reverend Shuttlesworth, during the time that he was in the neighborhood, there was a camaraderie. There was a love, a friendship, a fellowship throughout Collegeville that I strive now to try to rekindle and bring back again. Something was lost, but not forever. And we're going to strive to keep the thought, the memory, the struggle that he wanted us to see, that there was a better day, a better day coming. And it is not completely arrived yet, but we strive forward to bring that day to fruition. Thanks to all of you. Thank you for the gesture of making sure that this day, that he is remembered. Collegeville, thanks you. Amen.
Thank you.
Opportunity to our mayor also to speak, share his thoughts as well.
Thank you, Counselor, and to everybody that's, uh, that's shared words. I just want you all to know, do not beat me up, but I'm probably the biggest fan of Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. And the reason is simple. City of Birmingham founded in eighteen-seventy-one. From eighteen-seventy-one to twenty-twenty-two, y'all, no one has had more of an impact on who we are as a city than Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. Absolutely no one. Consider it. Um, his church bombed three times, his home bombed, stabbed, and so many other things of literally putting physically his life and body on the line to demand equality and justice in this community. Um, on the other side of this wall, Gene Bull Connor, Chairman of Public Safety, I guess the equivalent of the mayor at that time, literally used police dogs on peaceful black protesters, fire hoses on peaceful black protesters. And we, like the ten of us now, are responsible for that same police department and fire department in twenty-twenty-two. We gotta know our history, right? Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth was literally on the ground probably a minimal of a decade prior to King ever stepping foot here. It wasn't just the sixties, the things he was doing in the late fifties. Fight against, like, making our parks and our rec centers, swimming pools and all the other things and busing in Birmingham and our stores. He invited King here. So I just think it's important that we all appreciate Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth's impact on our community. I'm actually excited about his hundred, he have hun, um, turning, would have turned one hundred and celebrating his birthday and the man he was and the impact he's had on the community. And I think we all need to continue to champion Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. But really, probably the most important point, make sure the youngest generation knows who he is and the impact he had on Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I want to give Pastor Wilder just one more second. Uh, if you can come up here and with me. Madam President, I wanted to move for you now.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and then we'll do it after.
So we wanted to-
And Councilor, we'll just let you move for the resolution now as well. That's a very good. So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to read a couple, a couple quick stanzas from- As one of the most relentless figures of the civil rights movement, Reverend Fred Redley Shuttlesworth was born on March eighteenth, nineteen-twenty-two, Montgomery County, Alabama, to the parents of Mr. Better Green and Ms. Alberta Robertson Shuttlesworth. His educational development began as a student at Oxmo Elementary School. He graduated from Rosedale High School in nineteen-forty. He later attended Cedar Grove Academy, a local Bible college. In nineteen-forty-five, he delivered a sermon at Selma University and decided to pursue an A B degree there and later attended Alabama State College. By nineteen-fifty, he was the pastor of First Baptist Church in Selma, Alabama in nineteen-fifty, and in nineteen-fifty-three, he returned to Birmingham as pastor of Bethel Baptist Church. Um, whereas despite the efforts of white supremacists to stamp out the church-led movement through intimidation, civil rights activists grew in Birmingham and eventually paved the way for the Civil Rights Act of nineteen-sixty-four. Bethel Baptist Church is maintained as a historic site that welcomes visitors and stands as a testament to the triumphs of the modern civil rights movement under the leadership of Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. And whereas Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, who lived a long, successful life, played a crucial role in the civil rights movement of the nineteen-sixties. Of his many accomplishments, the most significant included the establishment of the Alabama Christian Movement for Human Rights. In addition, he was one of the founders of the SCLC. Reverend Shuttlesworth was the recipient of numerous prestigious honors and awards, including the Presidential Citizens Medal, the country's second-highest civilian award for United States President Bill Clinton in two thousand and one. Now, therefore being resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, commend Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, uh, on his one-hundredth birthday commemorating his many historic efforts and accomplishments, commend Bethel Baptist Church for keeping his legacy alive, presented this eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two, at the recommendation of Councilor Jay- at the recommendation of Counselor J.T. Moore. Thank you for all the work that you've done. And the last thing that I'll add is that in the coming days leading up to his actual birthday, I'll be visiting different high schools, just kind of sharing information about Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth and his many contributions, along with encouraging them to follow in his footsteps, to be more civically engaged. My hope and my prayer is to fan this flame of inspiration by exposing them to someone who lived a life on purpose. And so, I want to say thank y'all. Thank you, T.O.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Counselor Moore, for bringing this observation of Reverend Shuttlesworth's 100th birthday and to the number of speakers that also spoke on his behalf. So thank you very much. All right, counselors, at this time, we will consider our rest of our agenda.
And for some strange reason, I had 13 not on consent. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
So the first item will be item 13.
All right, thank you.
Item 13, a resolution fixing special assessments against the following properties for the abatement of noxious or dangerous weeds declared by Resolution Number 1850-18, adopted by the Council on August 21, 2018, in hearing of all interested parties. I'm sure y'all don't want to entertain me reading all those parcels, so I get a motion on item. All right, you got Counselor Williams, and seconded by Pro Tim Smith.
Correct.
Item before you.
All right, Counselor Williams.
Is, I think, is John Millage here? John, I know you wanted to speak specifically 209 and 210 on item 13.
Morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody. Normally, I'm here on business, representing a client or two. Today, I'm here on behalf of my church, Eastlake United Methodist. There is no doubt, we failed to maintain two lots back in 2018, and the city stepped in and bode those for us. We don't dispute that. I can tell you that we've been able to maintain very well since about 2019, 2020. But I guess I'm here today to ask that the city might consider waiving those fees, and let me just share the reason why. So I know Counselor Williams knows, many of you also know where we're located in Eastlake. We've been there a long time. Our motto is, and has been for a long time, "In the neighborhood for good." It's a little play on words. So many churches decided to move on, we decided to stay. Decided to stay with purpose. One of the things that we do a tremendous amount of is feed people in our neighborhood. When COVID struck, we have a large number of boarding homes in our neighborhood. I'm sure many districts do. We have a large number. Prior to COVID, the Crisis Center operated a day program. These facilities house adult mentally challenged individuals. They programmed Monday through Friday when McCoy was operating, provided a place of refuge and a hot meal. Well, that facility's closed. Many of those folks rely on our kitchen for that only hot meal that they get now. Last year, we saw the Eastern Area Christian Ministries close. That ministry had been in business for operation, I should say, for over 30 years. And I suspect some of your churches even contributed. There's 15, 16, 17 churches, and every week, they'd say the item for the month is beans. So the item for the month is cereal. It collected through the community churches, all delivered to the facility there in Eastlake, and then they distributed those to our neighbors in need. That facility closed. It was mainly staffed with elderly folks. This year, or actually last year, we started a food co-op to kind of step in and take the place. We buy food from the community food bank. And I'm sure, again, many of your churches and organizations do the same. One thing you know you don't get much of, if any, is produce. Grateful for the volume of food and the price that we're able to pay is but we supplement that with produce, realizing that so many of our neighbors don't eat healthy. And so, without question, we did let those lots go. That's $1,027, if I'm math right. I'm not asking you to waive it, per se, but I'm asking you to allow us to redirect those funds, help us continue to feed. I just ask that the council and the mayor consider that. That would be for those two lots. One of them is actually our potato garden, and the other one hope to develop as we grow that community garden. And we've also had some discussion about just making that into more of a garden of reflection, a place you can come and just for a moment of peace. That's our request today. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Millage. I can also attest to the work that Southeast Lake United Methodist Church does for the entire Eastlake community, whether it be their work in terms of feeding the elderly, but also people that have limited access to healthy food with their farmer's market that we actually help fund in the city of Birmingham. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we take off item 209 and 210 of item number 13.
All right, with your motion, counselor, we are moving then that we remove these back to administration so that they can talk with the Department of Public Works. Is that what you're offering in your motion?
I was offering a motion of dismissal.
Yes, Counselor Clark. Well, that's a good question. I was just about to ask the administration or the attorney.
Right. Madam President, resident of the council, part of, it's certainly the council's pleasure, but we wanted for our Director of Public Works to speak because we wanted to see where we were in the assessments, to see at what point the city is engaged. I think it's an appropriate recommendation, Counselor Williams, but we do want to see so that we can know what precedent we're establishing because typically, the assessments are handled either if the city has gone in, once the city has gone in, it's a reimbursement, or if we're being proactive. So we need to see where we are in their process. And then we can bring a recommendation back for the council to be able to take up Counselor Williams' recommendation. So if Mr. Yates is outside, we can do that right now if you all would.
You want him to come in, or you would like him to talk with the resident?
We can go out now. And if you all want to table it.
Counselor Quinn.
Yeah, just, if it's allowable, I'd be happy to cover the expense of this out of my discretionary funds.
Tear jerking, mom.
Okay.
What I'd like to do then, counselor, is if we consider the motion that we would move these two items, and then we would allow them to go back to administration for discussion and resolution of how, what we would do with those items, and then we go ahead and move with the other parcel of land that's on this particular item. Is that okay? So do we need a counter motion then, Mr. Clerk? What we wanted to do was just go ahead and remove these two items. No, no. Remove these two items to allow them to have the discussion, but we still have another item that's listed on item 13. Withdraw those two.
213, which one?
209 and 210.
And then just pass 213?
Pass the one for 213, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, they can deal with that later in some of the...
All right, we could do that. Do we need to change the motion?
Just withdraw, just making the motion, know that we are taking 209 and 210 out, and then we can deal with those later, so just withdraw from that.
All right, so we're withdrawing items 209 and 210, and then we're offering consideration for just the item number 213.
Second.
All right. All right, ready to vote. Counselor Williams, he's out.
Yes, he's out. All right, thank you, that item. Is he back there?
Oh, he's right there.
Are you going to vote, counselor? All right. That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Looks like we're going to, what are we, 28?
Yes, sir.
Item 28 should be on page 20. Item 28. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the sale and development of real estate with Green Meadow Apartments LLC. Under which the city will sell approximately 222 acres of land located in the vicinity of Lake Shore Parkway. At 1911, Tiger Walk to Green Meadows, apartments for a purchase price of $1,500,000. Green Meadow Apartments will undertake a multi-phase project involving the development of single-family, multifamily, and senior housing, which will include estimated 900 residents in the commercial town center. And we're going to pass today. I need you to... All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a motion on the item.
Second.
Now, I pushed the button.
Okay, I got you. And Counselor Member Clark.
And I didn't say anything because you said you were going to say something.
Now, you got to be quick on him, I guess. All right, thank you. Now that item is before us. Mr. Administrator, do we have anyone from the city to talk about this item? I know we have a project before us, and it has been recommended by the Director of Innovation and Economic Development, along with the Budget and Finance Committee and the Economic Development Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Cornell Wesley is here to speak to this item.
Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Cornell Wesley, and I serve as the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. We are excited, elated to stand before you of what we believe could potentially the byproduct of this transaction being transformation. We are looking at what I believe to be the largest potentially economic impact led by African Americans in our storied history as a city, that being over $100 million worth of economic impact and investment in our area, which will yield 900 units of workforce housing, single-family homes, multifamily homes. We will also have a town center built inside of this community, which will have all the accoutrements of a Ross Bridge, a grocery store, a community center. And might I add again that this is all African American-led. So we're excited about this opportunity. We have before us a host of individuals who are part of that development group, who will be delighted to speak to any questions that this council may have.
Thank you very much. If we could have our developers, if they would just stand and introduce yourselves and give us opportunity to review the project that you have before us.
Michael German and the...
Can barely hear you, Mr. German.
Is that better?
It's better.
Michael German, CEO. And I am so thankful to be here, and I really want to compliment the committees that we met with and the full council to be here with you. And just to share with you from a personal side, probably everybody know I was the Director of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Alabama. Ironically, the last person I met with on my way out was Mayor Woodfin, and he wasn't the mayor then. And what I said to him, some way, I'm going to be back here because I love Birmingham. Now, opportunity is here, and we put together a team of top-notch developers and financiers, and they're all here with us. And if I could just take advantage and just introduce everybody that's here so you'll know Ronnie Underwood, who's the president, Eric Calhoun, who's our Vice President, and I know everybody in the city would know who they are, Natalie Hill, who's Vice President, Kimberly Harris is our property management, J.C. Williams, sister realtor, Ernest McLaughlin, Senior Project Manager, Omar Harville, our Project Senior Project Manager, Reginald Miller, who's a project manager and also is a part of the University of Alabama. He's on the Advisory Board for the College of Real Estate. Eric Small, investment banker at San Blas Securities. His securities are in the billions of dollars that he's secure and protected. Todd Presley is the General Contract and Executive Director and the Principal of Fugama, who has funding over $2 million. And Benjamin Reynolds, electrician, and he's a person that we're looking for. And we've got a list of approved home builders for development, and all of those members are part of BCIA. So if you have any questions for me, I'm here in our team, but I want to thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. German, and thank you for introducing everyone on your team to us. We're very excited about this project. I don't, counselors, I would like to say that this project is in District 7. And so we're very excited for this opportunity to bring these residents and these families into District 7. I don't see if we have any speakers, we have any questions. Counselor Tate.
Good morning. It is a pleasure and an honor to see something like this coming to Madam President, District 7, and hopefully, it can expand into other districts. I also just want to tip my hat off to Mr. Cornell Wesley and Mayor Randall Woodfin for making this happen, and to you all. And so we're looking, you know, very super excited. Even I don't live in District 7, but I'm going to be playing over there in District 7.
Would love to have you over there. Counselor Clark.
I'd just like to thank you all for pursuing a deal of this magnitude because it's a lot of land, it's an ambitious undertaking. When Michael was in Birmingham, I had the pleasure of serving on your United Way Community Initiatives Committee. So that's kind of the last time we worked together. But I do want, I remember this property from 20 years ago when it was, when Alvin Johnson was working on it. And there was an issue with a bridge. Is that bridge needed to do the infrastructure to make the land accessible?
I think right now it's a little preliminary for it to...
Okay, so you're still going to get into the due diligence and the design details. So once you control the land, then you will start to do your more detailed planning?
Exactly.
Okay. That's kind of what I read in the way the contract is set up.
And I also have to say I underrepresented the funding capacity. Todd Presley is $200 million.
$200 million, okay, okay. On the graphic here, can you orient me to Lake Shore? I see where the Jefferson County Industrial Development Authority, is that?
Lake Shore will be right here.
Okay. So it does have frontage on Lake Shore, or? Okay. Yeah, and you know, one of the issues in that area, because I used to go to the Oxmoor Steering Committee years ago, but one of the issues was always that Lake Shore interchange and, you know, the traffic congestion. But now, there's a plan on the books to do some major improvements to that interchange. So I think that's going to relieve traffic flow and really open that corridor up, you know, to develop more without creating a lot of congestion. So really excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other counselors that would like to address this. So counselors, are we ready to entertain votes? Counselor Woods?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I did want to say it was really incredible. I've known of some of y'all's work in the past, but I had the opportunity to meet some others recently, and really excited when I heard about this project kind of coming together, seeing so many people really work together to get this done. And so I'm excited, man, I'm really excited to support this and want to really, hopefully, this can be an example going forward of what can be done, and we can duplicate this across the city. And so I really want to just commend everybody for really coming together to make this happen, and excited to see it get moving.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. I do believe we had someone from the audience that wanted to speak to the item. And this is one of the residents of Oxmoor Valley.
Okay. And I come to speak, and I think Counselor Clark actually addressed and jumped me on some of the concerns that we have. I do live in District 7. This new subdivision, proposed subdivision, backs up against my subdivision, a dual circle. So we are asking that the residents be very closely involved because there are great concerns with it. We love the development, but at the same time, we want to make sure that it does not negatively impact us. Counselor Mama Clark, you mentioned about the Lake Shore traffic. I think the gentleman mentioned about two egress to come out, but this subdivision has been compared to Ross Bridge. has been compared to Ross Bridge. Ross Bridge has five entries in and out. So as you go through proposing this development, we are asking that consideration be given for the traffic, the egress ingress, out toward Lake Shore, not within our neighborhood, and that buffers and everything be considered as they go through this. We do have issues still with traffic. And if this subdivision only comes in through Tiger Walk and out Tiger Walk, there's no way that density can be absorbed. So if you're going to be similar to Ross Bridge, get you five ways to go in and out, not just one. But we do have concerns. Thank you.
Kirk, we appreciate you. And the great thing is that you're among the developers and the project managers for this project. I know as we go through zoning and we go through other opportunities to talk about queue conditions and any other improvements that may be needed, you'll be entertaining the neighborhood and you'll be listening to the views of the neighborhood. Ms. Clark?
I just wanted to note that I believe the Oxmoor Steering Committee still meets regularly. And back when I used to go, Mr. Camac used to come for the, I guess back then it was Sand Ridge Neighborhood. And so while he wasn't a member, I believe it's a public meeting and, you know, your neighborhood representative can go. And so at each regulatory step, as they get the, you know, the detailed development plan, when they submit for approval, it will go through the Oxmoor Steering Committee, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Clark. The Oxmoor Neighborhood is very familiar with the role that the Oxmoor Steering Committee makes, so they're very familiar with that, and they'll be working with, and I'm sure the developers will be working with them. Sir, did you have a comment? Thank you.
The neighborhood president, we've had several conversations with her, and we've sent her information on the project.
Thank you. And she's also in attendance today, so we want to thank Ms. Green for being here and listening to the discussion as we move forward. Thank you very much. Councilors, are we ready this time to consider the vote? Thank you. All right, thank you very much. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. We look forward to the development and the work that will be done. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item twenty-nine.
Is that it? We have another item?
It's item twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority to market the Birmingham Express BRT to the public to gain awareness, educate, increase reach, and secure third-party validation. To support the Birmingham Express BRT project, the City of Birmingham will provide funding to BJCTA for communication and marketing efforts for the BRT project using tiger grant funds and the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars, and should strike on budget and finance, and should be committed the whole, on the recommended party. All right, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? And I have Councilmember Abbott and Woods for the item itself.
Our buttons aren't lighting up. We're going to have to get it.
The button was lit up, and I pressed it. Come on there, y'all. Get it.
She won.
And you pressed it second. All right, so. We'll just get used to the button. They beat us to the punch. We're going to have to keep our eyes on that motion button. All right, councilors, this item is before us, and it's authorizing the mayor to enter into that intergovernmental agreement for the BJCTA to market the Birmingham Express. We did have this item presented to us during committee of the whole, and it was also presented to the Transportation Committee. Any questions, councilors, to administration about this item?
I just had one question, and that is, so this three hundred thousand dollars is for marketing purposes only?
That's correct, Councilor.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
All right, any other questions? All right, let me. That was Ms. Abbott. All right, thank you. Now we're ready for the vote. All right, that item passes. Next item.
Item thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Holocaust Education Center to educate the greater Birmingham community through preserving and sharing the stories of Holocaust survivors and honoring those survivors who have perished, promoting an ethical response to contemporary instances of antisemitism, bigotry, and indifference for a term of one year, an amount not to exceed. And again, we changed the amounts. We have ten thousand dollars for Council Williams and four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for Council Clark. That's what we had before, but I don't know now.
Are we good? Okay, never mind. We're good now? Okay. Never mind.
All right, so we're back to the fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
Have Councilor Woods and Clark for the motion.
Some of us aren't having a chance. I know it. Put your hand up.
I've watched Family Feud for many years.
All right, so who was that motion in the second?
Councilor Woods and Councilman Clark.
Thank you.
I got a...
We're going to work on these pads. Thank you.
They're going to be gone next week.
Councilors, we ready for the vote?
I had a question.
Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry.
Did y'all change the term at all on that agreement? Were there any?
Just the amount?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready for the vote.
All right, voting should be up. Up now.
All right, thank you, councilors. That item passes. Next item.
All right, I think we're going to thirty-six. There's been a request for a two-week delay, thirty-six, by the administration. A motion on the item itself.
We're moving for a two-week delay for this item, thirty-six. Is there a motion in the second? Did anybody hit the button?
Let's get it before it's first. Let me, um, let me, let me read it. I'll read right.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
All right. Item thirty-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a Sixth Amendment to the contract for microtransit services between River North Transit LLC, the wholly-owned subsidiary of VIA Transportation Incorporated, VIA, in the City of Birmingham, to provide transportation services along with technology and professional services for design, marketing, launch, operation, maintenance, and performance evaluation through September the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to the City of Birmingham pursuant to the Resolution Number Twenty-One Fifty-four dash twenty, with the City of Birmingham awarding funding an amount not to exceed one million four hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars for a term ending on or before September the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
We're still dealing with the buttons. So the motion in the second is that we have a two-week deferral on this item.
Well, the motion is to get it before now.
To get it before, is there a question? Yes.
My question is, are we going to have the routes for this prior to the two weeks? Is that the two weeks where we have the routes?
So I can, I can speak to that, counsel. We can get with both our BDOT team as well as our ARP team to make sure that's included. A part of the reason for the delay is because of the funding source piece, and we wanted to present a clean package to you all. We'll include that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Quinn?
Yeah, so we're sort of in a, in a, in a hard spot right here because, you know, I'm getting calls from constituents who are saying that, you know, recently it's been difficult to actually get a ride. And, you know, we allocated one point five million out of ARPA to, to do this. I mean, when it came before the Transportation Committee, that was stated as the funding source for this extension. And, you know, this is a popular service that a lot of people have become, rely on now. And so, I mean, any more additional information that we need?
So, counsel, the Office of the City Attorney and the Department of Transportation, they were working to bring this item to you today because the amendment needed to be, the agreement needed to be amended to reflect that it was coming from ARPA funds because that was not included. So we wanted to make certain that we didn't confuse, counsel, because that has been discussed with you all. The discussions have been held with VIA because we wanted to ensure there were no gaps in services in between now and the delay. If the council's pleasure is to take it up now, it can be. We just wanted to bring everything back to you, and especially now with Council Williams' request. But we can make sure we take, we can take it up now if it's the council's pleasure. We have Ms. Amelia Mueller and also Ms. Christina Argo from our Department of Transportation to speak to any questions you may have, in addition to what you just inquired about, Councilor Quinn.
Yeah, so I would encourage us to go ahead and do it, simply because I think, you know, in this allocation, you know, or in this extension, there's another vehicle added. And, you know, I'm concerned that the operator is, you know, pulling back on the amount of service that they're providing because they're not sure about, you know, whether or not they're going to get paid, quite frankly. So I think us going ahead and taking action on it would give them the confidence that we're committed to this and that they can go ahead and resume, you know, full service. So, you know, to my colleagues, I would encourage us to, to go ahead and get this moved and taken care of today.
Councilors, what's your pleasure on that request?
I'm open to that if I can just ask those questions to whoever, BDOT or whoever.
Yeah, and Counselor Williams, we did discuss that in Transportation Committee, you know, that BDOT is discussing, you know, what an expansion looks like. And we, Counselor Woods and myself specifically spoke to the fact that, you know, East Birmingham would like to see an expansion include, you know, that, that part of town as well, so...
So is this one point five? I guess my question is, is this one point five to continue the same service?
Yes, the one point five is to continue the same service area without any expansion, you know. So even though the, when we did the allocation out of ARPA, that adjective, expansion, was included, you know, in the information, it's, it's now morphed a little bit. So hopefully, an expansion will come to us in the mayor's proposed budget. And, but, you know, definitely, speaking to your concern, we definitely know what, what future service area is going to be, you know, what it's going to look like.
We do know what it's going to look like.
We, no, we don't know currently. I don't have that information, but according to our Department of Transportation, that's a, something that they are very actively working on to identify.
Okay.
Thank you. I see that we do have our Director of the Department of Transportation. We do have two questions from, or questions from Councilor Woods and Councilor Smitherman, but I'll let Mr. Fowler go ahead and address the question.
Well, it's not really for Mr. Fowler.
Well, they wanted to address, Mr. Fowler, go ahead.
No, it wasn't one of the questions.
Okay, so there wasn't a question for Mr. Fowler? I thought there was a question about...
Right, so we asked, I think there was a question about routes. So I brought Mr. Fowler, but the OCA is ready with the amended agreement if you all are ready, counsel. But Counselor Williams, if you have questions about routes, Mr. Fowler's here to address those.
Yeah, well, I mean, my, I guess, all the discussions we've had when using this ARP money, we were talking about expanding the service. But now I see that apparently that's not, we're not talking about expanding the service with this one point five.
Clarification. So in, over the next few months, we're going to continue the service as is and concurrently to that, work with the VIA team and then also the, and the routes in a coordinated way. And so by that, I mean, the one point five is not enough to expand to all the zones that we showed as a, as a future vision at one point. And so we want to use a data-driven approach to look at where the service is most needed in coordination and that later this year because also the Transit Authority is re-coordinating some of their routes as they get ready to implement BRT. And so we just want to make sure that we're smart about how we're expanding it. So the agreement continues the current service area, and then we're going to come back to you in a couple of months and present an expansion option using...
Okay, well, then I just want to make my plea again that, that the eastern side of Birmingham have transit options. BRT stops before it gets to the eastern side of Birmingham. VIA does not service the eastern side of Birmingham. The routes have been cut back from the BJCTA on the eastern side of Birmingham, and there are large swaths of area where a VIA expansion would make perfect sense to be able to connect to either the Bus Rapid Transit or just to have that option itself. And it is something that is sorely needed in the eastern side of Birmingham, not just in the western side of Birmingham. So that's my, my plea.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Woods, did you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I echo Counselor Williams's concerns about expanding east once again, but specific question right now is trying to get clarity on what it is that, that's wanting to change, why the delay? Or is there something else that is, will be added or changed besides what we talked about in Transportation Committee?
It's really adding the language about the funding source.
Making sure it's clear that it's ARP funds.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, I'm good with taking this up now.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. At this time, then we go ahead and we will consider the item based on the information that we've requested. I believe this is the routes, and then you'll book, your agreement then has now the correct funding source? All right, thank you. Can we go ahead and continue with those same, the same motion in the second? All right.
No one objected to changes and all that stuff?
Thank you. Are we ready for the vote, councilors? All right, thank you. Let's go for the vote. All right, thank you very much. That item passes. I just want to echo as well to Mr. Fowler that not only do we need the expansion, I feel, east, we do not really go as far west as we'd like to see. I think it stops at five points west, Crossplex, and so we have a need further into the western sections as well. Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other items?
Forty-eight, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the person and agent relative to the purchase of information management services, tax, tables, software licenses.
All right, thank you. At this time, we do have a request for Mr. Herb Patterson. He wanted to talk about an item or an issue that he has. And Mr. Patterson, you still with us? If you will come to the podium and just give us your address, and you have three minutes, sir.
I'm Mr. Herb Patterson. I live on Beacon Parkway East, five two oh nine. That is in Birmingham. Gwynne Iris. Down on Gwynne Iris. We're up on top of the mountain. Learned last year of a project that was going in on our street that is going to add three hundred apartments up on top of Red Mountain at the intersection of Beacon Parkway and Beacon Parkway. It's a street off Valley that goes up this way. Top of that is, will be appearing. Got some pictures. Up there right now, and it's heartbreaking for me and a lot of other residents. Could I, I, party around? Couple of neighborhood meetings about this, and started some actions trying to figure out what to do about it. Action took a trade in town. Trying to get a copy of what zoning was approved. There was a lot of canceling and rescheduling of zoning meetings to where... There was a lot of canceling and rescheduling of zoning meetings to where we were not able to keep up with when they were going to happen and as quickly as they changed. So we don't know all the details there. But it seems like there should be something done about those trees that you see shown with just red clay instead of trees there. We were misled on how many trees were going to be removed from that property. And there is promises to replace those trees, but not, not a size as mentioned, and not how many and how long it's going to take them to grow back. There was also a traffic study done, and, and it showed there's going to be no impact to the, to the traffic in and out. Well, we have two schools that, that people pick up their children up in that area and on Valley Avenue. And we already have three condo towers there that have about 300 people total, and other businesses along there. And this is, the traffic study was done at the height of the pandemic, when there wasn't much traffic going on, and the schools were not in, in session. So we have really questioned that, because the traffic's already backs up on getting onto Beacon Park, I mean, to Valley Avenue from our area. Some of the people of the Rockford community who live right close to where all the construction's going on have talked to the people who are working there till 8:30 at night with all their bulldozers and, and trucks and grinding up the trees and the little shreds of stuff to take off and be melt, mulch to go on things to be sold. It, it's kind of annoying when it gets that, you have that kind of equipment. Then they do block the streets, and I've kind of exaggerated possibly, but it's kind of like longer than a Southern Pacific train blocks the streets in some of our areas with long trucks and pulling equipment out. And we're having to dodge around this way. And at night, they have left off lights to where we couldn't see actually what's going Rains on that steep street that goes down to Beacon, to Valley Avenue have stopped up, and there has been several times when they've had to send a special crew out to stop that from backing up into the Rockford community. And already, red water is coming down into their place. They've noticed 17 additional open springs that have come up since all the trees were taken down. And we've seen them use fire hydrant water, and I've not been able to get to the bottom of who pays for that, and if, if it's approved by the city to do, to, to use that water. Broken curbing, trucks and stuff going over, over the curbing, particularly when that entrance is shown there, where that's the entrance to a long road up to the top of where the place is. They couldn't come out with the traffic thing exit closer to the one that's there. And, and a few ruts in the areas between the sidewalk and the street where things are parked. We're seeking help in getting these things validated, and, and I'm trying to look into that. And, but I wanted to point out the problems we're having, and we really do have serious problems. And so we will be possibly scheduling a meeting with the zoning board, and I've had an offer to do that. And folks, these folks could do that. We're working people who live up there, and retired people. That's how I can be here this morning. But I appreciate you letting me tell you what's going on out, out there. And that is, if you come over I-65 at Alford Avenue and look out toward the buildings we have up there, and then there's this big bald spot. And so it's not a good thing, and I don't think it's going to be fixed before the World Games.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. We appreciate you bringing these issues to us and the concerns that you have. Ms. Abbott, I know this is one of your neighborhoods, correct? And so we wanted to refer Mr. Patterson to administration, but did you have any comments?
Yeah, this is a hot topic in the Glen Iris area for the residents who live on the south side of the mountain. You know, nothing is rolling down on the people on the north side, but the south side, the developer did not exactly tell the truth. Of course, we've had that experience before about the trees, and it seems that every tree on the property has been bulldozed and shredded. So there are a lot of angry, concerned people, and we received a report, actually, I, I emailed Mr. Sparks during the neighborhood meeting because it was a hot topic of discussion. And we got a report back, which I shared with Mr. Patterson, and he was going to share with some other people. But they feel like that the city isn't on top of this mess as well as it should be. So there are people who would like to see the city keep an eye on what they're doing better, because the residents are definitely keeping an eye on it. And you know residents who are affected are always more interested than people who live somewhere else. So it's just an issue. Mr. Patterson wanted to come today to talk about it and bring those photographs of what has occurred. So thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. And we will give you an opportunity also. I know Ms. Abbott has communicated, but Chief Sparks has indicated that he would entertain any conversation about that as well.
Right, Madam President. Right, thank you, Madam President, and Counselor Abbott. Mr. Patterson, as you've mentioned, Ms. Alice Williams and Ms. Katrina Thomas are on top of it. The Counselor, Counselor Abbott has kept us in the loop, and I'm tracking it as well. Ms. Williams is waiting outside. She and Ms. Alicia Lumpkin will be out to make sure that you're still having the follow-up that you need, that the information is being shared, and that our Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department is providing you with adequate updates, so you can know that we are very attentive to it. So they're waiting right outside for you.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselors? Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you. At this time, Counselors, we have item 13, I believe, that we need to bring back. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Administration has advised on item 13 that specifically 209 and 210 were cut by a contractor and the city has paid that. So in, in effort to calm down Chaz Mitchell, we are not setting a precedent, and Mr. O'Quinn has agreed to pay these out of his discretionary. So these fees and fines will be enforced, and they will come from Counselor O'Quinn's discretionary, and that is my motion.
Second.
I have a motion to reconsider the item.
Second.
All in favor, let me know my thing out.
Aye.
All opposed, and so we need a motion on 13. As it...
As it's written, yes. Item 13, we have a motion and a second.
Who made the motion? I missed that one.
I thought I did.
I, I know.
It's the button.
I think I made it. I made it on the button.
I see why we've never used these buttons.
I know.
They were going too fast.
I made it on the button, but...
So who wants to make that motion?
I think we should not use the button.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. So moved.
Counselor Clark.
Second.
All right. Pro Team Smith.
No, she...
I think everybody tried to beat someone to the butt.
I know.
Items before you, it's originally...
All right, any questions, Counselors? We clear on the items?
Just to be, just to be abundantly clear, these will be paid, and we are not setting a precedent. I want to make sure that everyone is clear on that.
Thank you.
Amen.
Counselor Clark?
I just want to thank East Lake United Methodist for staying and having a good thrift store, because I've shopped there.
I've shopped there, thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, did you have a question?
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you.
Voting is over.
President Pro Team Smith.
I'm Woody.
I'm Woody, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right.
That vote should be...
Thank you, Counselors. That item passes. Before we start with our counselor updates, I do just want to acknowledge that Ms. Marilyn Mosley has attended with us today. Thank you, Ms. Mosley. We're always happy to have you here. She's the mother of Chris Mosley, and we know that she's been community leader and elder in our community, so we thank you for being here with us. Also, Mr. Giddens, before you step out, we want to acknowledge the president of the Brownsville Heights neighborhood. So he is gone. Thank you very much. Counselors, I know that we were entertaining, trying to give our comments virtually, and I must say that this week I didn't do one either. So, and I know Counselor Woods, we said we'd entertain that and try again. But Counselors, we'll start with comments, so I'll start with you, Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Be litter free continues in District Eight. It also continues on the back of our chairs. I don't know how, but we're continuing to work with our residents to ensure our neighborhoods are clean and our drinking water is protected. Our next cleanup will be in the Thomas neighborhood on Saturday, March 19th. We'll gather at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church in Thomas at 9:30 for registration, with the cleanup going from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And tonight, we have the Bellevue Heights neighborhood meeting. It's usually a hybrid meeting at, both in person at Charles Brown Elementary, and there's a dial-in available. The number is area code 3126266799. I like to say it slow, because, because if you're writing and people talk, say the numbers too fast. So that's the Bellevue Heights neighborhood meeting tonight at 6:30 p.m. And the mayor mentioned all the sports activities going on. This coming weekend, March 11th and 12th, we're, we're excited to host at the Birmingham Crossplex, the NCAA 2022 Division One Indoor Track and Field Championships. And this is another great opportunity to see world-class athletes, some of them who may eventually represent Team USA in the future. So come on out and support our young people in their athletic pursuits and enjoy some of the wonderful sports facilities in District Eight. Speaking of youth sports and legends, on this past sundrenched Saturday afternoon in Birmingham's West End, dozens of current and former players, coaches, parents, and community leaders gathered to honor Coach Fred Plump at the dedication of the Fred Plump Athletic Fields in Lowry Park. And I know the basketball tournament was really competition for this event, but, you know, I went here. I know, I know. So, but I didn't get the word that it was canceled. So me and other people were still there, so we had a mock dedication ceremony.
It's a dry run.
A dry run. We had the dress rehearsal. So Women's History Month, Arlington Historic House is celebrating Women's History Month and their powerful contributions to society, culture, and art. Arlington Historic House invites you to Art at Arlington on March 12th, 2022, from 11:00 to 4:00. The art show will feature four dynamic artists, Pete, Karenina, these are women, I know her name is Pete, but it's a female, Yogi Dada, Dory Boyd, and Brooke Huffman, specializing in mosaics, photography, canvas paintings, handmade jewelry, and more. Join us and bring art, to, join us to enjoy art, refreshments, and socialize with our featured, featured artists. And, you know, for the gun violence, I just pray that, you know, the Lord can heal our hearts and heal our community as we continue to deal with so many homicides. And, you know, I don't know if it's spiritual bankruptcy or what, but I am praying daily that the whole country can get a grip on this issue. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods.
No, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. I guess, just for clarity, what I was saying last week was, and I appreciate you giving the committee an opportunity to pilot the virtual thing for a month or so, I think we can kind of, as a council, just take some time and decide what we want to do going forward. So just kind of wanted to show off what PIO could do and what that would look like in practice and stuff. Couple announcements. Today, Kilo Springs neighborhood will meet at 6:00 p.m. They'll be meeting at Smith Middle School in the gymnasium. Roebuck neighborhood will meet on March 14th at 6:30 p.m. They are meeting both virtually and at East Precinct. And so definitely want to encourage all residents to plug in and participate in your neighborhood meetings. Great opportunity to keep up with what's going on, as well as make some decisions for the way dollars are being spent in your neighborhood. I do want to thank Counselor Moore. Thought that was really an incredible presentation today, I think, really a legacy that we definitely got to do as much as we can to keep on the forefront and make sure that young people are learning about it. So really appreciated that and thought just the presentation was really, really good. I know my grandfather, he didn't tell me to, every now and then he'd tell me to really get to know and understand somebody, but I remember graduating high school, and my granddad didn't give us gifts very often, and even those gifts are probably something he already had. But he gave me a, like a limited edition Shuttlesworth computer bag, like from some event. It was like, you need to, you know, really get to know and understand who he was and really dive deep into it and stuff. He was somebody I really researched and read about, and, and then we hear about a lot of stuff they went through, but it's kind of some of the underlying stories and stuff that maybe he would share, really about just the way people would mess with their kids and stuff, like where the bus driver would intentionally maybe drive a mile or two past your house to drop you off, just so your kids would have to walk all the way back to the house. And some of those things they had to really go through, I think we can channel that and look at. The way they kind of continue pressing forward through difficult situations and adversity as we deal with difficult situations, adversity, and difficult problems that we're facing and being, and having to solve. And so just want to thank you for that presentation. Also, just wanted to shout out one more time Huffman High School, boys' basketball team, as well as the girls who made the Sweet 16. The boys came up a little short, really proud of them, though, incredible season, incredible talent. Our seniors really wish them well, and we got a lot of young guys coming back, and so excited about that. But really, I'm continually impressed with that team, that program, the way Coach Ward runs it is just incredible. So excited for what they've done and really looking forward to just continuing to watch them execute at a really high level, year in and year out. And so looking forward to bringing them back. Really wanted to win. I was, I was, not going to lie, like this one, I was, I was, I was hurt. I was hurt by that one, but really, like I said, the kids, man, they're resilient, and just watching them kind of bounce back and get back to work is, is exciting. I know I would just enjoy going in there and watching them play. Like I said, 2021 was a rough year, but I could always go in there, watch a game, couple hours, and just, just enjoy watching them do what they do. So I appreciate them for that. Also, getting ready to kick off our Be Litter Free 2022 campaign over in District One, and got the idea from Counselor Clark on the, Clark on the T-shirt, since I wanted to give everybody one. If you're interested, take that with you. If you don't, leave that right there. But definitely wanted to extend that opportunity to sharing that. And then we also have a video prepared from PIO, if they are prepared. Hey, what's up, everybody? Counselor Clinton Woods, we're back kicking off our Be Litter Free 2022 campaign. Had a tremendous 2021, over 7,500 pounds of litter picked up. We were in several schools in the District One community, talking about the impacts of littering. So we're excited to get started. And 2022, we'll be back out on March 12th, meeting at Calvary Resurrection Christian Church at 9:30 a.m. Really good opportunity. So if you have time, want to invite you to come up, help us clean up litter off the side of the road, and continue to make that impact. But also, we want to invite you too, if you have time, to go into the schools with us and speak to a classroom about the negative impacts of littering, the reduction in property values, the aesthetic downgrade of the area. So we want to invite you to come in and talk to the youth, the people that are in a position to, to spread that message throughout the community. So we're excited about that, excited about the, the success of last year's program, and looking forward to taking it to new heights this year. But to do it, we need you. And so I look forward to seeing you on Saturday. And so I look forward to seeing you on Saturday, March 12th, 9:30 a.m. at Calvary Resurrection Christian Church. Together, we can get it done. To get back to it this year, I think, 2122, so we started in 2020, and that, you know, we were out there doing it, but I'm not gonna lie, it wasn't very smooth or efficient. And so we kind of learned more as we went. 2021 partnered for a full year with Black Warrior River Keepers, and really brought a level of organization and expanded our volunteer base. You know, really, really wild, I think. Counselor Clark has kind of shown what, she's even expanded it further than what we've done. So it's really cool to kind of see different things added to it. And so I think this year, we're continuing on what we've learned so far, but also going to further prioritize going into the schools and talking to the young people. I think that, you know, when you look at, if you think back to the Buckle Up campaign, where, you know, people weren't really wearing seat belts in cars regularly, and they really went into the schools when I was coming up, and really drove home, buckle up, put your seatbelt on, buckle up, put your seatbelt on. And so anytime, you know, from when I was probably five years old to 10 or 11, you couldn't get in the car with me and not put your seatbelt on without just, hey, buckle up, buckle up, because they, they drove it into your head. And so we want to make sure the kids, when they're in the car, you know, I won't say mom or dad, I say if you're in the car with your auntie, and she's throwing a McDonald's bag out, you know, you're, you know, jump in and intervene there. So want to encourage anybody, residents, you know, maybe you don't want to go out and pick up trash on the side, on the highways and byways, but, you know, we've been more than happy to help you come into a classroom with us on the days that we go, and we can spread out throughout the school and make sure that we're sharing that message as well. And so, yeah, so that's kind of the announcements for today. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Moore?
Yes, so had a couple of things that, you know, I wanted to share. I actually was able to do my, my virtual announcement, but I have some extra things that I wanted to also talk about. So first things first, I wanted to just say thank you to my, my committee members of the Education Committee, Darrell O'Quinn and Clint Woods. A lot of you probably don't know that they were probably rappers in their past life. Yeah, we'll definitely see that video. I don't know if Kim has that just yet, but I'll definitely make sure that we, we share that with you. No, okay, cool. Soon and very soon. So for Dr. Seuss Day, or Read Across America Day, the Education Committee had an opportunity to go over to the library and really partner with them, just trying to bring some awareness about some of the things that they have available. As we all know, our libraries are a great resource to our city, but they have so many things that, you know, most people would not know unless you actually went there and experienced it. And so we had an opportunity to go over and, you know, find a fun way to communicate or partner in Reading Across America Day with the library. So I'm excited for you all to be able to, to see that. I also wanted to send a special thank you to Mr. Decore Hale. He's a local author. He wrote a children's book called Ebenezer the Sneizer. He actually invited me out to a school to go and read to some kids, and so just wanted to say thank you to him. I also want to say thank you to each and every guest that came through today to, to make this presentation possible, for us to be able to honor Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. I greatly appreciate that. Last two things is, I wanted to send a big, big shout out and a big thank you to the mayor and Public Works. Counselors, I sent you all some pictures of a house that is abandoned, but the property owner lives right here in the city, right? Lives right here in the city. And if you saw those pictures, if you had an opportunity to look at them, you could tell how negligent and just really downright disrespectful it is to have your property looking like that, and to have to have other residents come out of their doors each and every day to look at it. But the mayor, you know, it was a phone call that I made to him, and, you know, he had Public Works over there to clean it up. Now, although I'm thankful for that, that's not, that's not their responsibility. That's not their responsibility to clean up that type of mess, right? And so I just want to, again, just say thank you to Public Works, thank you to the mayor for, for doing that. There was also a group of individuals, transient individuals, who, you know, don't have anywhere to live, right? And, you know, there were several residents that were making phone calls and saying, hey, we need to address this, we need to, you know, try to find somewhere else for them to go. And I reached out to the mayor after I had an opportunity to actually go over and talk to these individuals, because they were living in tents. They were living in tents in a, in a vacant lot, and had an opportunity to talk to them and really, you know, find out who they were. And I, like I said, shared that with the mayor, and, you know, he was able to come over, get their information, find out what type of services they needed, you know, what type of, you know, help that they need to get back on their feet. And so now, we're in the process of helping them to, to transition. We definitely had to be honest with them and say, hey, this is not, you know, a place where you can, you know, just, just live and be, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to find a pathway for you to, you know, get back on your feet. And so just a different type of service, man, like, and, and I greatly appreciate it. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to the community, and that's the type of, you know, atmosphere that we, we need to have in each one of our communities, where we're just always extending our hand and trying to help folks. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday is canceled. So we get a day off. And the cleanup of George Ward Park and Greensprings Highway on Saturday and Sunday was a great success, and I wanted to say thank you to the residents who came out, and also to Public Works, because Public Works came with the Park and Rec people, and they cleaned up Greensprings Highway, which was an embarrassment to everyone on earth. I do not understand why people feel like they need to open their car windows and throw every piece of trash they own out the window, including a mattress and box springs, my favorite throwaway item. You know, people are, and there's a dumpster in George Ward Park, and I'm sure Park and Rec put it there, but every zero who drives by drops his mattress or his refrigerator or his sofa off in the park. We do not, yeah, it could be, it could be a lady, but you know, it's hard for them to lift those sofas into the dumpster. So, yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that, that Public Works has roll-offs. There's one on Sixth Avenue South. I visit it fairly regularly, because I don't want to put my mess out. I don't even want people to know what I'm throwing away. You know, anybody can go to them and dump their stuff. So, and I'm familiar with the one on Sixth Avenue South. I'm not familiar with the locations of all the other ones, but I know that they were listed on that "don't dump in my backyard" flyer. Anyway, it's just a big issue. I, I just don't understand the mindset of throwing all of your litter out your car window. Or, a cool thing that they do, like in Jefferson County, on the way to my brother and sister-in-law's river houses, they throw it all in the back of the truck, and then they just drive real fast. And it just all goes out, and when they get home, they don't have anything to clean up. It works great. But I don't, I don't have a great appreciate, appreciation for it on, well, any place in Birmingham, but Greensprings Highway just looks like they bring it on purpose. Anyway, but thanks to Public Works, it looks good. It looked good yesterday. Now, who knows what it looks like today, but, you know, the World Games is coming, and we don't want people to know what we do to our city. We want to fake them off while they're here and have them think that we're clean, neat, caring people. So let's just fake people off for just a little while, at least, and maybe we'll get in the habit, and then we won't keep littering our city and make, yeah, it's kind of sad. Anyway, last night was the Glen Rice Neighborhood Meeting, and of course, the apartments on top of the mountain were a hot topic, but the success of the cleanup was also a hot topic, so that was good. Tonight, Highland Park and East Avondale Neighborhoods both meet at 6:00. I was going to recognize Will Jones of the Five Point South Neighborhood, but when I looked up, he had left. He sat through our whole meeting today. And I wanted to say something about the city's homeless efforts, because people are back on the Red Mountain Cut, that Public Works and everybody got together to clean all those people and all their mess off of the Red Mountain, where the Red Mountain Park used to go out and you could see all of the rocks and all of the little animals that lived in. Well, now you see tents and trash and clutter, and they're stealing the mail from the people nearby and opening it up and leaving it on the ground, so you can at least see all the credit card applications that they've stolen out of the mail. So it's a problem, and the Redmont Neighborhood Association has brought it to our attention, and then we're going to bring it to the city's attention. But I wondered if we have, like, a, an ongoing effort to do something about all these little tent cities that are popping up, like the one there, they're just, they're just everywhere. And the mayor was kind enough to go out in Five Point South when everybody was camping on the sidewalks, and he stopped and talked to them and encouraged them to be gone by the next day, which was wonderful. But I'm wondering where they're going? You know, do we have a, a program and a process for dealing with this problem of more and more and more people camping out in our city? So I guess I would be curious to know.
Yes, Counselor Protem wanted to address that.
So, Counsel Abbott, I don't know if, do you remember, Mayor Whitfield has talked about the possibility of tiny homes. I know he's been circling ideas about homeless just for the past couple of years, but when the World Games came to us about the tiny homes, that was supposed to be used as a pilot to try to address the homelessness. And also, if it's up to the council's pleasure, the mayor's pleasure, we can actually use ARPA funds to address homelessness as well, using those tiny homes. So I think that's something to consider, so I'll say that about that part.
Thank you.
Well, we're just getting a lot of complaints, and, and, and I, my heart goes out to the people who are having to live in a tent, because, you know, there's all kinds of issues with living in a tent. And so, but I just wondered if we have a program or anything where we're sending people out to talk to these folks that have just popped up.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, Counsel, I know you're in the middle of your report, so I'll limit my comments and can talk in deeper as long as you need post your meeting. I'll just say the short answer is yes, we do deploy. Counselor Moore brought to my attention yesterday, I make visits, but even with the, the neighbors I spoke with yesterday, they told me that One Roof had already been out there prior to Counsel Moore and I coming out there, which means, and sometimes we go, but sometimes our external nonprofit partners go as well. Today, and effort today was coordinated, so sometimes we lead the effort, sometimes our nonprofit organization lead the effort, and a lot of times it's coordinated. But some of this is, a lot of this is bringing to our attention. So even the area you're speaking to, I don't have a visual of it, but if you, if you let us know where it is, we will deploy resources to try a very, very soft approach first, direct contact, how can we be of any assistance or service, or strike in that balance of saying, you can't be here, give it some time, but during that time, getting people to the resources they need if they're willing to accept it.
Well, and that, the city's already cleaned that up once, and it was a big effort, because there were lots of people involved. The thing is, I guess nobody goes back to look and see if, if they've come back, and they came back, and, and now the residents are all up in arms, because theft is going up, and St. Rose Academy is right there. Yeah, so this came up this morning, so I'm, but anyway, that, that's all. And if, if, if that information on our homeless program could be shared with all of us, and we could give people a contact name or number to call and say there's a problem at this location, that would help council members, because we need to know who to go to.
I agree. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn, did you have a follow-up or a question about that?
Yes, I just had a follow-up. So, you know, it's, it's an issue that really exists all over the city. I would say pretty much every cross street under the Red Mountain Expressway, there's some sort of encampment. I actually had a nurse at a clinic right on University Boulevard next to the Burger King, you know, send me an email and saying, you know, I just watched two people, you know, inject each other and, and pass out, you know, right on the side of the expressway. You know, I think that that is increasingly a, a common observation, including other illicit acts that people should not be doing, or is not socially acceptable for people to be doing in public, have been reported to our office. So, you know, I could, just right off the top of my head, I could list to you at least a dozen locations where there are long-term encampments. And really, you know, through our CDBG, we have Continuum of Care, and that organization that's responsible for the city's continuum of care is One Roof. And really, you know, One Roof should be the lead agency for the entire metropolitan area to address this issue. You know, I don't know if the issue is just bigger than they have the capacity to, to handle. It likely is, and, but, you know, they are really, that's really their lane, and, and, you know, I think the entire metropolitan statistical area of Birmingham, you know, should look to them for, for leadership on this issue and, and being, you know, giving us direction to, as to how best to address it. You know, I, I see a lot of, there's a lot of compassion in the city of Birmingham. There's a lot of folks who, who want to help and, and address this issue. But, you know, again, you know, we have to have some organization and some coordination, and really, it's the continuum of care, of care, i.e. One Roof, that should be providing that leadership. Short of that, there's also a federal agency called the Federal Interagency Council on Homelessness that is, is a agency that provides guidance to continuum of care organizations, you know, throughout the country. And I have reached out to their regional contact, they're based out of Atlanta, I believe, and, and asked him to, you know, you know, basically said, hey, look, you know, this is a increasingly prominent issue in the city of Birmingham. I feel like, you know, we're, we, we need some direction, and I've encouraged that individual to, to come to Birmingham and, and speak to us about, you know, what we can be doing better to address this issue. But, you know, one thing for sure, that, you know, if you got folks, essentially, I mean, you know, most of the highway overpasses essentially, I mean, you know, most of the highway overpasses are locations of residence for, for folks. Most patches of woods, you know, in, in neighborhoods, utility easements, I mean, I, I walked up into the woods behind Crestway Baptist Church. It's a 70-acre wooded hilly lot. It's an old mining site, and there's campsites there, you know? You look at it from the street, you don't see anything, but there's people living there. So it's, it's a big issue. And I think that, you know, needs to be addressed. But again, you know, it's our continuum of care organization that really needs to be providing leadership. And beyond that, Federal Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness can provide additional guidance.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Did you have a comment, Ms. Clark? Are you okay?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to ask, you invited them to come and speak to us where? Here at the council?
Yes. So actually, I told them that we were going to be at National League of Cities this coming week, and that if it was possible, if we could meet up with them while we're in Washington DC to, you know, sort of have a face-to-face sit-down to discuss, you know, coordinating a meeting here. So that was sort of the first step, was to connect with them at NLC, and then plan from there.
Thank you. Counselor Williams, your comments, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Red Buck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, March the 10th at 7:00 o'clock at their normal meeting place, which is now called New Beginnings Church. Industrial Development Board has two upcoming vacancies. All interested applicants should submit their resumes. Attention to India Bailey. If you're doing it by mail, that's 710 North 20th Street, Birmingham, Alabama 35203. If you're doing it by email, that's india.bailey@birminghamal.gov. The same applies to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, which has one upcoming vacancy, and this is the last time we're going to announce both of those boards. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. East Avondale Neighborhood Association has a meeting tonight at 6:00 PM via conference call. Please call our office for any additional information. Wauhoma and Smithfield Neighborhoods meet on Thursday, March 10th at 6:00 PM. Wauhoma will meet via Zoom. Smithfield will be in person at Smithfield Court Community Center. Want to remind you all that there, that the BJCTA Transit Workshop, what they're calling the Roadshow, is Thursday, starting at 11:00. If you want to, getting additional information or RSVP, please contact Tiffany Thompson, TThompson@BJCTA.org. And finally, the Transportation Committee scheduled for Monday, March 14th has been canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. We do have some neighborhood meetings. North Pratt will meet via conference call tonight at 6:30 PM. That dial-in information is 605-313-4100, access code 1226945. Tuxedo Heights Homeowners Association meeting will be Wednesday at 4:30. The dial-in number for the conference call is 952-206-4918, access code 223418. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be Thursday at 4:30. The dial-in number for the conference call is 952-206-4918, access code 223418. Hooper City will have their neighborhood meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM. You can join them in person at the Hooper City Rec Center, which is located at 3901 Fourth Street West, or by calling in 952-206-4918, access code 223418. Announcements, Public Safety Committee will be held today at 1:00 PM here in the council chamber. The next meeting will be Tuesday, March 22nd at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, March the 17th at 1:00 PM. Also, Walem will have their virtual EPA Community Meeting Thursday at 6:00 PM. And also do have to make another announcement about the Special Care Facilities Financing Authority Medical Center East is a public corporation organized pursuant to Alabama Code Section 1162-1 through 1162-21. It's a three-member board. It's established to exercise all powers of authority qualifications. You must be a qualified elector or own real property in the city of Birmingham. The length of term is six years. Application period is March 1st through March 10th, and you can apply at www.birminghamal.gov/boards-AND-agency. Select the Special Care Facilities Authority, Authority Medical Center East option. Select to apply. In addition, applicants can send their letters of interest or resume to Brandon.McCray@BirminghamAL.gov. I do want to kind of echo on some things that were spoken earlier today. I traveled to Oakland last weekend and was surrounded by some of the most political thought figures, policymakers throughout the nation. And then, you know, during that time, I received a call from my colleague, Council Smitherman, who enlightened me on what had just transpired at the BJCC. And, you know, immediately, I, you know, speaking to her, I could tell she was upset, and so that weighed heavy, you know, on me as well, because I do see her as, you know, a sister, and I've been knowing her parents for a long time. And so I was very, very deeply concerned about what was transpiring back here in the city. And as the Chair of Public Safety, I'm very concerned of the safety of the committee. Have had a lot of opportunity to talk to the mayor. I know his heart. He knows my heart, my commitment to moving this city in a, in a safe manner. We did not get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of, out of this overnight. This is not a problem that people need to be pointing fingers. This is a community effort. And when we remove the calm out of community, the end of their word is unity. And so we, what I, what I, what I can say and what I, what I do recognize is, people do, is not exemplifying love. So how can you kill people that bear the same skin color as you? Most of y'all wear the same hairstyles, the same clothing, and you just go out here just on, just like the Wild Wild West. And then when I stepped off the plane, learned that a 13-year-old life was sniffed away from him. I got a problem with that. I got a major problem with that. And so, as the mayor stated earlier, parents, people that are raising families, you have to bear some responsibility. And so, at, at what point are we going to start bearing, you know, responsibility for the actions of, you know, what has transpired? Most people know what these kids are into. And as I look around and look on social media and look at what some of these kids are doing, how can you allow your kids to be posting pictures of guns and, and glorifying, you know, money? And so when we look at the, the culture, the rap culture, you know, when you look at the young Dolph, a man that was sniffed away, he went out there rapping about gang banging and all that. He was making a positive impact on his community. And so when you look at the rap scene and the people that are doing these things, these people are, have been given an opportunity to change their life. But the minute somebody say something that bad about your set, you ready to go out there and start shooting. When I look at and, and saw the thing that transpired in Louisiana, you in the mall following somebody, and you come out and you, you open up fire, you have no regard for life, none whatsoever. And so my plea to the community is, and then coming back, stepping off a plane and getting a call from my mom saying that my brother's wife's son was, I call it execution, 22 rounds. And so you destroying families and communities. On the, on the end of a bully, you're going to either be dead or you're going to be in jail. And as Council Smitherman said, a permitless gun law being passed. Who's paying attention? Nobody's paying attention. When your governor is trying to build three new mega prisons, it's, your name, people's names are attached to that. So nobody's thinking. We have laws. We have things that are going on that are bigger than us. And so my plea to these parents, pay attention to what your kids are doing. Get involved. You know, you can't keep blind, pointing fingers at the city council or the mayor or the police chief. This is bigger than all of us. All of us have to come together and work together. And I'm at the point where I'm sick of it. You know, I had the opportunity to meet a councilwoman at this event I was at, Chair of Public Safety. And so that, that warmed my heart, you know, to know that people that's across the country are very concerned about what's going on in their community. And then, you know, I'm gonna echo with JT Moore's, the pastor said in his district, you know, we gotta get these pastors involved. Everything ain't about a, a price tag. Don't come to me for no money. Let me see what you working with. And to these activists, let me see what you working with. Now I'm gonna bring some training here from my national colleagues, and I'm gonna see what you working with. And I'm gonna call you on your bluff, because I'm sick of this. And I yield the floor, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. We appreciate your comments and appreciate your sentiment. Thank you very much. Counselor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say publicly, and I've told you this privately, I am so sorry about what happened to your family. That is a hard pill to swallow, and you're the second counselor that has had a family member to deal with gun violence, like recently while we're on the dais. Like I said before, this is something in the community. Y'all gotta come together. Like, you know, I just remember this, Mayor Whitfield has talked about before, these, I'm not a gun person, so these really big guns that all these young people have had. I personally, y'all saw this this summer, a young man coming out of the house with this big gun. And I was like, I gotta get away from it. I was just driving, and I said, this is ridiculous. Like, this is ridiculous. We need y'all to come together. Like, you, it doesn't matter how you feel about the 10 of us, you can play your part in helping out with this community, like, especially with the young people. You know, honestly, I gotta say, Mayor Whitfield is nice. He is a really nice mayor, because when I was in high school, we had a curfew, because people my age, they just, I don't know, remember, they, they were just acting a fool. And they actually enforced it. I remember having, because you know me, I'm 16, I was like, they not going for it. So how they gonna do that? They had checkpoints where they had the police checking your ID, everything else. So, okay, we giving y'all a warning. We don't want to get to a point where we have to have a curfew for these young people. So I, I'm with you. I'm with you, Counselate, and for Council Williams, too. He's been talking about it, too. I will say this, well, I'm going to my announcements. South Tissaville Neighborhood will meet via teleconference call today from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. The call-in number is 602-580-9484, and the access code is 684-6610. For anybody listening, listening that lives in South Tissaville, I do want to thank Mayor Whitfield. Council Moore is very right. Anytime I have a huge problem, he has been there. I know you guys have seen this big pile of dumping off Goldwire. I see it every day going to my parents' house. I told Mayor Whitfield about it, and he and his team found out the cause of it. It was actually a contractor putting all, I mean, it's spilling out into the streets. And so he's, he talks to them, and they're gonna address it. But I do want South Tissaville to know that we are working on different complaints like that, and it does take time. Like what Counselate said about the gun violence, we didn't get here overnight, so we're not gonna solve it overnight. That's the same thing with illegal dumping as well. The Arlington-West End Neighborhood Association will meet today, too, at, via teleconference from 6:00 to 7:00. The call-in number is 425-436-6359. Access code is 6438112. I will say, hopefully, more people will attend these neighborhood meetings in all nine districts. This is the time for you to give us your complaints, because a lot of times, if you don't talk to us directly, we do not get them as well. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be Monday, March 28th at 3:30 PM. It will not be this Monday, because we will be in DC for NLC. Submissions are due Wednesday, March 23rd by noon. Email submissions to luquia.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The Tissaville Library will host a tissue paper painting activity today from 3:30 to 4:30. The activity is free. Also, the Tissaville Library will have free English language classes today at 4:40 PM. I think they got something else going on. Also, the Arlington House is celebrating Women's History Month. I think Madam President and I are going to this this weekend. They will have the R.A. Arlington premiere reception this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00. And then there we have, there we have an art show celebrating art, female artists in our community this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. They will have four local artists and four local chefs. So hopefully, we see the community coming out here. At our last PSC meeting, thank you, Council Moore and Counsel Abbott for attending. We did talk to the administration about addressing illegal dumping. Attorney Benar came with two cleanliness ordinances that will hopefully come before the Council for Committee Hold this spring. Hopefully, this will help to address some of the issues we have been having, people not using trash cans, et cetera. So there is a plan for that. I did talk to administration. We're still trying to work out about doing a citywide PSA, not just using the 10 of us, but using celebrities, any influential people that can help us out, because I do think this is another community effort we have to come to together. I will say, thank you Districts 8 and 1 for following after District 6, because we started the Legion Field Recycling Initiative in 2019, and I'm glad to see other counselors coming together for the initiative. But I will say this again, this is a nine-district initiative, so if we are going to embrace something, be litter-free is fine, but I do want to make sure we have unity with this happening, because that's the only way we can address it. Because if they see us unified, then the neighborhoods will come, will come together and be unified. We will have a cleanup this Saturday, where Youth Serve, helping to get the youth more involved. We will be starting at Memorial Park at 10:00 AM at Memorial Park, so we'll be working with them, just teaching them cleanliness and recycling. And lastly, I did talk to my school, school board member. Hopefully, we will go out into schools and have a recycling curriculum to talk to our kids as well, because Counsel was, is right. My dad is actually, I can't even say if he was a senator or one of the senators to pass the seatbelt buckling law, and that was because my sister actually told him about the physics of how, you know, if you're going 60 miles per hour and you hit a pole, then you're gonna go 60 miles into the pole. So it is the children, they are the reason for why adults correct their behavior. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem. These are announcements for District 7. The East Brownsville Neighborhood will meet today at 6:00 PM. That meeting will be held via conference call. The Riley Trevallik Neighborhood will also meet today at 6:00 PM via conference call. The Garden Highlands Neighborhood Meeting is canceled for this evening at 6:00 PM. The West Brownsville Neighborhood, they will meet Thursday, March 10th at 10:00 AM. That meeting is via conference call, as well as the Roosevelt City Neighborhood Association Meeting will be meeting at 11:00 via conference call. And the Hillman Park Neighborhood Association will not meet this month. And the Central Park meets Thursday, March 10th at 6:00 PM. I thank all the counselors for the comments that have been expressed today regarding what's going on in our community. Of course, it deeply saddens me whenever I've learned that a family has to suffer as the result of gun violence. As has been mentioned, my family suffered as a result of that, but my son was able to be healed and walked away from the violence. That was demonstrated towards him. So I just want to say, I agree with the mayor and with the counselors, that it's a community problem. It's all hands on ground. All, we all have to be a part of this. Counselor Smitherman, when you talk about curfew, and we think about Mayor Whitfield as imposing any type of curfew. When I was a child, you know what my curfew was? The streetlight. And you believe it or not, we beat it into that house before that streetlight got on. And everybody started thinking about the streetlight, okay? So we need to start enacting a little bit of that in our homes and instilling that in our families, that you don't have to have the mayor in our families, that you don't have to have the mayor to give you a time to be at home. And so let's just all work together, and let's do the best for our community. And I thank you again, everyone, for participating today. We want to thank our officers that are on duty, Cedric Pinkert, Amber Cardwell, and Derek Square. Counselors, thank you again for today's meeting. Thank you administrators. Thank you mayor. Thank the public. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Madam President, before we go, am I gonna be alone here next Tuesday, or are we going to have a council meeting? Because I know a lot of people are going to the NLC. Have we looked at how many people are going to be gone?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, we will be polling and be sure that we can entertain a quorum. I don't think we have a quorum. And we've already sent that information over to the clerk. And so, yes, sir.
[inaudible]
Yes.
You have five councilations, so you don't have a quorum?
Yes, so we do know that we polled everyone, and we won't have a quorum. So there will not be a city council meeting next Tuesday. Yes.
[inaudible]
So Ms. Abbott, you'll give it, stay at home that day.
Madam President, quick question on non-digital ways for the public to view the redistricting map.
Yes.
I know we have one outside of the council chamber.
Correct. We are in the process of creating the other replicas of the map. The plan is to place one in the Central Library, and then we'll place others in the four branch libraries, and those will be available. We'll make you aware, as soon as those become available, they are in the process of being produced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you asked that question.
The regional?
The regional libraries, that's Avondale, Five Points West, Enslie, and North Birmingham. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the help on that. All right, entertain that motion.
A second.
All in favor, let it be known by the God.
Thank you, counselors. We adjourn.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Councilman J.T. Moore, and these are your D4 announcements. First up, Kilo Springs and Northeast Lake will be having their Neighborhood Association meeting at 6:00 PM, so be on the lookout for that. On March the 14th, Woodlawn and Airport Highlands Neighborhood Association meeting will start at 6:00 PM. North Birmingham will start at 7:00 PM. Next, do you have any interest in knitting? Well, the Brownsville Heights Community Center will be having a knitting class every Thursday from 12:00 to 1:00 PM. Also, y'all do me a favor and help welcome the newest boutique in District 4, D. Trespa Consignment Boutique, located in the heart of Woodlawn. Stop by and pick up some cool vintage clothing and accessories to add to your summer wardrobe. And thank you, Leroy's Marsh, for choosing District 4 as your new home. Finally, I would like to send a big shout-out and a big thank you to Glen Oaks Elementary out in Fairfield, and Noble Elementary School for inviting me to be a part of their National Read Across America Day, also known as Dr. Seuss Day. I had so much fun wrapping Dr. Seuss books to the kids, and just really getting a chance to connect with the, the young people, and encourage and inspire them. It was really cool seeing them step outside of their comfort zone and just have fun with literacy. So just wanted to give a big shout-out to you all and say thank you for inviting me and having me. And for more information or any updates and highlights, please make sure you follow me on Instagram and Facebook at JTMoore_D4, and thank you. Have a good one.